Shut my phone down. Okay, I will officially call the August 14, 2019 work session to order of the town board. We'll let the minutes reflect that Andy Moore is absent this evening. The rest of the board is here, ready and able to move forward. We'll also recognize our staff that's here. Thank you. And we've got some distinguished members of the audience that I'm sure we'll be hearing from very shortly. We have the July 24, 2019 minutes before us. We want to entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote of approval for those minutes.
Want all in favor?
Oh, thank you for that. Sorry. It's legislative versus the work session. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? All right, thank you for keeping me honest. And Lisa, thank you as always for the minutes. Monthly reports, all but a couple are in. I'm sure that the town clerk and personnel office will have theirs in by the end of the week. So, thank you for everyone to date that has those in. We do not have any public hearings this evening. We do have a number of guests. And we'll start in with our first guest, Walt Baker for discussion of proposal, proposed use for 85 Sovereign Drive. And my friend Zach is going to tee it up further for the board. And then we'll turn it over to Mr. Baker. So, if there are any additional comments there, Mr. Zach?
Just a couple of quick ones to introduce the project.
Thank you.
Is at 85 Sovereign Drive, just off Creek Street. Just, I believe it was last year, we brought this to the board as part of the condition of rezoning for this property when it was rezoned from residential to GB, that this board just hear the proposal for what would be intended on the property and to bless its use there before it goes to the planning board and zoning boards for its necessary applications. So, the project before us is for a warehouse, office warehouse operation where they will store and use drywall insulation materials. And before, in your packet there, you have a sketch plan that was prepared by Walt and an architectural rendering of what's proposed as the building, very similar to what was reviewed by the board last year, which at that time was for a catering business that was going to construct the building there for food prep and food delivery. So, I don't want to skip over any of the other details. Let Walt and Ed talk about the proposal and entertain any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Walt Baker with DSP Engineers. With me tonight is Mr. Jessica, the owner of U.S. Ceilings.
Good evening.
And the cover letter I submitted, which I believe you have, along with the site plan, the conceptual site plan, and also a building rendering elevation of the proposed building. As Zach mentioned, we're here tonight basically because of the rezoning to general business and as a condition of the general business rezoning, the board wants to approve basically all the uses are used on that property. As you well know, Mr. Decker owns the property. He's had a number of people that bought, Nolan's over there purchased property off of him. And Mr. Decker's been owning that since, gee, when his dad was around. I remember him back in the eighties. So, at any rate, at this time, Ed found this piece of property and he's leasing a property now up in Webster on Kane Patch for his office, but his warehouse is at another location. What he wants to do is obviously have his warehouse and office space in the same location, and he wants to stay in Penfield area. And he's got it under contract with Mr. Decker. And we'd like to, obviously, this is a unique piece of property. It's .7 acres and it's a unique shape when it was created. And we've met previously with Jim Costello, gone over it, just, you know, to make sure that the staff understood what we're looking to do. And we thought this would fit. Obviously, we scaled it down. He wanted to have a little bit bigger building, but it won't fit on the property. So, we tried to make it fit in with his use for his office, which is going to be approximately 800 square feet. And then the remainder would be about 9,000 square feet for his warehouse. And it'll be cold storage. He's not going to have a staff person in the warehouse. He gets deliveries approximately once a month.
Yes.
And like Zach mentioned, he's a general contractor that goes to job sites and puts up the metal studs, the interior construction for different buildings that are using metal studs versus wood stud these days. Insulation and drywall, actually, you know, the joint compound and all that type of stuff will be kept in a warm part of the building near the office space, which we showed the elevation where the two-story would be the cold storage and the single-story would be heated.
Yep. So, that, I was going to ask about what was going to be used for that area around the office. So, it will be heated space for those things that are temperature sensitive overall. So, the number, the types of deliveries you get, metal studs and guessing drywall?
Actually, it's just insulation.
Just insulation?
That's the only delivery. The rest of the materials we use are purchased in Rochester from different suppliers and that's delivered to the job site.
Right to the job site. So, really, really, this is just more insulation?
Well, equipment and insulation, yes.
Okay.
The other two buildings on the site, maybe this is a question for you, Zach?
Sure.
Is this, the height of this building, is that consistent with the other two?
Yes.
Okay. So, it looks as if from the picture, it would be consistent. What is this square, do you know what the square footage of the building just to the north is, just from a perspective?
Self-storage of like, yep, former Uncle Bob's storage up there.
Right.
I don't know the square footage of that building, but I do know it's taller than the proposed building you see.
Okay. And it looks, it looks like it's bigger because it's?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't look like that would fit on the yellow box site. So, okay, and just from a perspective?
Mm-hmm. And the unique thing about this property is what was saying is we're treating this as two front setbacks because it's on the corner there, which if, when you do all your setback lines on this map, you have to ask for a variance no matter what you put on the property, even if it was a shed. So, not uncommon to see that.
It certainly seems like, you know, kind of a final piece given the rezoning in that area.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns with the actual structure or the operation.
Good operation to build.
And they're showing the, showing a template on there for the loading dock and the tractor-trailer delivery spot there off the tail end of the building on your site plan. So, that's been accounted for in terms of citing the building so you have room to navigate that vehicle through there?
Right. Severn is a private drive, so it has all the access easements, joint and cross easements for each, each property. And there's utilities there. There's sanitary sewer, there's water, public water, and the storm sewer facility that was built by Decker is accommodating drainage for this property as well.
I don't, I don't have any concerns. I think the presentation is thorough and as I said, it appears to be a good fit for the site and is minimal, you know, minimally disruptive, disruptive at all, given its general business.
Traffic volumes will be low. Basically, there's three employees?
No, oh, yes, I'm sorry. There'll be three going through.
Right.
So, Zach, we want the board through next step. The board looks favorable with this. I think it would be helpful for the board to just be aware of what next steps are.
Sure thing. Next steps are a sketch plan with the planning board to go over this project. And then they would approach the zoning board and planning board jointly, or I'm sorry, concurrently to go through the area variances for setbacks and final site plan approval after that, once the planning board has completed sketch plan.
And then just at a high level, what are the setbacks needed necessary for this project?
I believe in this area, we look at, Walt, remind me if I'm wrong, I believe it's 80 feet off the front.
Yes.
And we have 30 off the rear and 10 off the side.
Correct. And we have two front setbacks. So, we're going to need variance in both front setbacks of the property. I don't know if you can notice it on the, on the site plan. It is reduced size scale, but I tried to show it in a lighter line if we were to comply with the, the actual building setback.
Skinny L.
If you can see that. It's that, it's that little sliver that's in there, the very thin line. So, you know, this being, you know, with the standard general business, it's, the code was designed to be on a public thoroughfare, whether it be state or county or town right away. And in this case, we're on a private drive in the back and it's unique. You know, we got people backing up to us from Creek Street, but we have two, with the curve as Zach mentioned, we've got two front setbacks and we have to pick one side, one rear versus two sides and two fronts or two fronts and two rears. So, yeah, it's kind of unique. So, we do have to, the zoning board, we have front setback variances, and then we have to go for side setback and rear setback. But I tried to, that's why initially Ed wanted the building to be what?
10,000, almost 11,000.
Yeah, it was 10,500 that he wanted to go with. And I said, we can't do that. You know, I squeezed the bag as much as I could, still being able to house what he needs to house, so.
And you were able to meet the lot coverage number as well for green space?
Correct. Yes, we do have the green space, yes.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we approve the proposed use as submitted and discussed and approve the proposal to go to sketch plan.
I'll second.
Site plan review.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded for the discussion by the board. I'd ask the staff, anything you'd like to add or believe should be added to the record that hasn't already been put into the record on this particular matter?
Nothing more.
All right. And then to the applicant as representative, anything you'd like to add to the discussion tonight that you feel hasn't been added to the record that you believe is pertinent to the application?
I don't believe so.
All right. So, there's a motion on the table in a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and move forward to the next step.
Thank you so much.
All right, great to see you. Good luck with the new job. Welcome to Penfield.
Thank you.
Hopefully it means your business is growing and?
That's right.
All is good. So, I didn't, I didn't ask, you know, your U.S. Ceilings, and I was going to ask that question. You know, you talked about, you know, putting up walls, partitions and things like that. I'm guessing ceilings as well.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, ceilings like, ceilings like this or?
Ceilings, yes.
So, these types or, or drywall or both?
Acoustical suspended ceiling.
Agreed.
Drywall also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ceilings are important.
Ceilings are important. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you the same.
See ya.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the second, our second guest. It is Peter Vars, BME, across the variance from the design criteria for Penfield Square. And Zach, as Sir Vars is getting ready, any additional comments or thoughts that you would like to add for the board before we get into this?
Just a little background information on the project. This is for Penfield Square. It is the mixed-use project that was approved by the planning board late last year, early this year? I'm all over the place. It's about a minute.
It was, it was actually, it was actually in 2019. I think you started way back before that.
We did, yes. It was early this year, January. It was right on the border.
Yeah?
New Year's. It really throws the mind off.
Yeah.
So, here we are. They are under construction right now, doing their preliminary grading work on the properties you see on Route 250 there next to the YMCA. What they're, and Peter will explain this as well, but what we're here for is relief from the design criteria for the width of the sidewalks adjacent to the buildings. They're highlighted on the map that was provided to you there, just on the south side of the building, if you will. They're highlighted in pink. They're shown at five feet, and our design criteria has required those to be seven feet in practice. There have been times where we have granted, I believe, a waiver to this. And I'll let Peter explain the unique circumstances that have kind of brought this to us.
So, unless I'm making a mistake, I would, I would say that purple or lilac versus pink?
Yes.
I only say that because I get, I get corrected on a regular basis.
Yeah.
With a lot of women in my life, so.
I think we just have different ink tones.
They're watching, they know that, at least I know the difference between pink and?
Well, it's green over here, too.
That's right. So, I won't even show you mine.
All right, very good. So, Peter, floor is yours, sir.
Great, thank you. So, as Zach pointed out, the reason we need this relief is the fact that we have a unique circumstance that the parking lot area you see just to the north of it, highlighted in blue, is the 48-inch transmission main of the Monroe County Water Authority. And you may or may recall that project that was undertaken by the Water Authority two years or so ago, their east side supply system. The fact of the matter is, the Water Authority is very sensitive to that water main. It serves 300,000 people, as they point that out to us. Thus, they really wanted any and all construction to not occur over that water main. They reluctantly agreed to allow the parking areas within their easement. They hold a 50-foot easement along the north property line. But they were adamant as it relates to the protection of their, their distribution system that no construction occurs. So, that shifted the parking area to the south closer to the building. The other alternative we had was, and we did look into this, was the travel lane through that parking area is the fire lane. It is at 26 feet. We did have a very brief discussion with PRC and the Fire Marshal about reducing that in width. But the Fire Marshal, I think, prudently decided that that fire lane should be maintained because that is a four-story building there. We had talked about possibly moving the fire lane to the front of the building, but he very objectively pointed out, said, "Well, my concern with that is, is that's the main entrance to the building. If they are evacuating the building, there'd probably be a lot of people there. Not the best place for them to set up operations." So, we agreed with that and said so. Therefore, it led us to the, to request the relief of the, to reduce the width of the sidewalk. It's shown on there, it may be difficult to read, but that sidewalk ends up being about five, four and a half feet off of the outdoor patios of the first-floor units. So, home leasing, as it relates to those first-floor tenants, wanted to get some separation between, between the sidewalk and those patios, which are the shaded bumpouts on the building. So, that is why we're requesting to go from the design standard of seven feet to actually it's five and a half feet of integral curb concrete sidewalk.
And so, I think it would be helpful for the board to explain why, why we asking for that size sidewalk, because there is, there is a reason for that. I think the other component of that that is important is that if, if we weren't, or if you were not dealing with the transmission main itself, those parking stalls could be right out to the property line. So, if you wouldn't mind just commenting on that?
Sure.
One or both of you?
Yeah, so, yeah, the reason, and the design standard's a practical request in the fact that the seven feet accounts for or allows for somebody that parks perpendicular to the sidewalk, in this case, the bumper overhangs into the sidewalk. You know, people may use the curb as the wheel stop. And you know, you have two feet of hangover over the sidewalk. So, what was seven feet maybe in effect can get reduced down to five feet in width, which still would allow two-way pedestrian traffic, opposing traffic. I can say in this instance, with regards to home leasing and the use here, one of the things is this is a residential use for seniors. Point being is, this isn't going to be an area of high traffic. Home leasing operates several of these apartment communities throughout the area. It's, and it's independent living, and the key word there is independent. And seniors, whether they're going to drive their car once a week or once a month, they see giving up their car as a sign of giving up independence. So, the point being, they want their car, they park it, but it's not like they're driving in and out every day. It's not, there's no commercial activity on the side where you would have a lot of pedestrian traffic of people going to some of the commercial uses. So, we're not, I, we just don't believe we're going to have a high instance of where, if there are cars that may be overhanging on that five and a half feet where it's really going to create some pedestrian movement issues, you know, maybe once in a while somebody may have to wait for somebody to walk by while they walk by a car, but?
I was thinking of like walkers and wheelchairs as well. Like, is that going to be problematic if you've got a, let's say, a Buick overhanging, which may be very realistic, overhanging in the curb? And then you've got, you know, potentially residents who are not very ambulatory?
That's a very fair and very good question because actually what this plan doesn't reflect, but is reflected on the plans that are going back to the PRC, is what we are doing is the handicap spaces that are illustrated here, they're being shifted so they're going to line right up with the entries, the main entryway, such that they should not have to traverse laterally the sidewalk. In other words, they'll get out, they'll use their accessible space in the ramp to get onto the sidewalk, and then they'll be right at the main door, which has, you know, a concrete landing out the sidewalk.
Would these be sidewalks, though, that residents who maybe don't drive would be walking on? I mean, is it, would this be a walking area or is it more an access area?
It's more of an access area because the whole intent of this project has been to focus the activity, the active lifestyle, to the front of the building. And if we had a footprint here, that's what you would see. That whole rear of the building is either residential units or it's like service area. There's no interior common spaces out the back where somebody may be, "Oh, I'll park out back because I'm going in because we're having an event here."
What is the, the width of the sidewalks on the rest of the property?
So, they are a mix of, Rob, because where we're parallel to the road with no parking, the code, the standard allows the five-foot walk with the six-foot curb, or six-inch curb, excuse me, so five and a half feet, because that does meet the requirement to allow two-way pedestrian. But the other areas, for instance, to the west at the assisted living building, we are providing the seven feet where we can. As we stated right at the beginning, the unique issue here is, is we just, we don't have the room to move this parking area forward to the north because of the presence of the transmission main.
When did, when did you first approach the Water Authority?
This dates back to May of 2018, working with the Water Authority.
And they just now returned a verdict?
No, I would say it, it reached its final resolution, I want to say in April or May or, excuse me, yeah, April or May of this year. It took a year.
It was in May, probably.
Yeah. And it ultimately ended up being a meeting with the Executive Director of the Water Authority because their original determination was all improvements needed to be out of the 50-foot easement. They wanted it free and clear. And, and we worked with them to at least get some of the improvements to occur there. And as Zach could attest to, there was, the town staff played a large role in that, too, of finding out what was the right balance between the mixed-use district development guidelines, the Water Authority's responsibilities and concerns, and, and then the applicant's desires, too.
When was the final planning board meeting?
I think that was in January 2019 was when final site plan approval was granted by the planning board conditionally. Actually, we just got approved today to send the MYRs over.
Yes, we entered the pre-MYR process, the post-approval process. It's been working through the spring and early summer here to button up those details, as Peter said, with the Water Authority and then just other utility things that came up along the way. And then just technical corrections that, you know, go beyond the planning board and really rest for the town engineer, his final approval.
So, planning board last looked at this in January. Monroe County Water Authority finally got back to you in April?
I would say what we, is we were able to come to a mutual agreement between, because it was a 12-month process. It was meetings, emails, several iterations of, of the plan. Because one of the things I would admit, I can readily admit, we did look at instituting parallel parking along here to increase the separation from the water main, increase separability. The challenge we have, home leasing chimed in with this, is seniors do not like to parallel park. And so?
And the loss of parking from that layout.
That's true. And we did lose parking spaces from it, but it was, home leasing was thinking of it from the operator standpoint, too, of convenience for the residents.
Yeah, this, this modification that you see here to accommodate the Water Authority's requests is still consistent with what the planning board?
I was just going to ask, is this kind of conditioned upon this agreement being struck, their, their approval?
Yeah, speak, yeah, because what I could say, Paul, is, because Zach brings up a good point, because the plan that the planning board approved had, the pavement did extend over the water main, such that we had a little bit more separation, but that, they finally just resolved, they said, "We just can't allow it." So, that's when we started the process with the PRC, as well as there are another way to accomplish this. And that's when we started looking at, can we do something different with the fire lanes and whatnot? So, we really, we looked at a lot of different alternatives and, and really had to balance a lot of demands from a lot of entities, the Fire Marshal, the Water Authority, home leasing, the first-time user of the MUD Design Manual. It was a learning curve for all of us in that regard.
And all of the options were to the rear of the building? There was no, no options anywhere else on the property?
No, we did look at modifying, if you want to call it the front area, we did look at that. But I will say this, but I'm sure Zach would support it. That really was one of the prime areas of interest by the planning board.
It was.
The planning board sees that and they really, we just didn't want to compromise it any further because they see it as being the main focal point to integrate public use with a private development.
So, it seems as if?
A foot and a half?
No, no, just the, the citing of this in, in general with the commercial component, the YMCA and how that fit together.
Right.
We're working this to be right in front.
But we're talking about a foot and a half?
Well?
Is what I'm talking about.
But, but a couple of things with that is with, if you're saying, "Why can't we just shift the building another foot and a half forward?" Part of that then gets into the assisted living building to the west because there is a second-story connection, it's called the bridge, that connects the buildings together. So, then you start generating some architectural issues with that connection. And it's, so it becomes one of those domino things. You know, you start one change, then it facilitates another one and keeps pushing the, pushing it forward.
One thing I can add to this, when, when we have looked at this before and, and modifying this, the seven-foot requirement or, or allowing relief from it?
Yes.
Is the use of parking bumpers to, to offset that five, the two-foot?
Sure.
Distance that Peter mentioned for the bumper overhang. So, the wheel stop before the actual curb that's there. These spaces are still 18 feet deep, so you could set a bumper at, you know, one foot or 18 inches off the curb, and that would in effect preserve the five, five and a half feet of sidewalk that is there without the overhang.
Without the overhang.
So, that is an option here that we've used in the past and I think could easily be implemented on the plan.
I would encourage that.
Sure.
It also is good for that, you know, that level of driver in terms of the safety.
Yes.
You know?
Where else have we waived this seven-foot requirement? Under what circumstances have we waived it?
Similar circumstances because it was driven by setbacks and the property limits for parking adjacent to a building. I believe we used it, I can't think of the name of it because it was a number of years ago, but I believe it was for a restaurant or a medical or a doctor's office use. Most likely, and I'm thinking right off the top of my head, it was in the BNR district on one of those rezoned properties on Penfield Road where it was a tight site, parking was essential. The building was set where it was based on the front setback release, side, rear, to get everything out of one property. And then we were granted that waiver and installed parking bumpers in a little bit.
No, I would, I'd make a motion that we approve the request as presented. I would also propose that we add a condition of approval to have the bumpers be installed in the parking spaces. In the parking spaces.
Okay.
These bumpers, are they good old winter lawn? They're, they're softer, though. Are they like tires?
Yeah, they're like, they're rubberized one that they use now, yes.
I like it so much better than those cement ones, you know?
Right, yeah.
People will feel more comfortable.
Exactly. Yeah, they don't beat up the plow either.
Yeah, I was going to say, the guy with the plow truck likes it, too.
Yeah.
Lot easier on the car, too.
Mm-hmm.
Rubber to rubber?
Rubber to rubber. Okay, so moved, is there a second? Linda, second it? Linda, second it? And so that is for relief of the design criteria, with the caveat that the addition of bumpers, so that it still provides the adequate width, or maximizes the width of the sidewalk for the use by not only independent, but any other folks that are walking in that area. Other questions, discussions by the board? Okay, Zach, any additional input that should be on the record that we haven't already discussed?
Nothing more.
And I'll ask Mr. Vars, anything additional that you'd like to add to the record that we haven't already talked about?
No, sir.
All right. That being the case, a motion and second on the table goes in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Matter is approved.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, thank you for coming in, and good luck on the project.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Peter.
Take care, Zach.
Thank you, Peter. Sure, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, moving on the agenda, we have no action items this evening. We do have a couple of information items. The first one is an update of the website, so Mr. Renner has joined us. He has kept us updated and abreast of things as it relates to the website, and so David, let you...
May I make a motion that we yield some time to Mr. Planning over here and let him get out of here, since he's got like a two-sentence item?
Wow, you can't, you're not authorized, you're not authorized to make the motion, but you probably would find, willing to participate. So, at the request of staff for staff, we'll jump to item B, conditional use permit for Perry's Pizza at 1837 Penfield Road. And Zach, you owe David Donut to possibly get out of here five or 10 minutes early.
Why isn't it an action item?
We'll work on that tomorrow, for sure, Dave, thank you. It's not an action item, it's just an informational item at this time, because all I was gonna present to the board tonight is that we've scheduled a public hearing for September 4th to allow, to request for a conditional use permit to occupy what is formerly Guetta's Pizza in the Four Corners, and...
That's true. It's even on the agenda.
So, the reason it's on the agenda is typically we bring it at a work session before we do the public hearing. And with timing, with Mr. Costello being out and everything like that, so it's more of a formality, but we wanted to make sure...
Because it's a restaurant, it's not a streamline?
That is correct.
Got it.
That's correct.
So, we've done the September 4th public hearing, we're gonna advertise for that. A resolution was adopted by this board just last week, and they'll be coming in, the owner, the operator of Perry's Pizza has bought the building now from who owns it.
Okay, so that's new piece of information.
Yep, that was, I talked to Jim today, and he informed me of that, wanted me to inform the board of that.
How come he's not here?
You know, I tell you, that guy. He wishes he was in the building.
Slacking off.
He's probably watching. Is there anything they're gonna do differently, though? I mean, it's a pretty nice building.
Mainly interior, from the meetings that we've had with them, mainly interior modifications, do the necessary sign work that they want up front, minimal work, really, because obviously that building went through a lot of rehab in the past to get to where it is now, so minimal work, just to go through the process for pizza to pizza, basically.
Yeah, I guess the question would be Perry's Pizza, the one that's in the old Brighton in Brighton?
Yep.
Now, that's a bar. There's a bar. I mean, Guetta's didn't have a bar, I mean, are they thinking about having?
I don't know that answer, I don't believe so, but that's a question for the public hearing.
Yeah, definitely, definitely from a public hearing standpoint, talk about that. You know, is it eat-in, eat-out? And if it's eat-in, you know, is there alcohol being proposed, and some things like that? So, those are some good things that we'll wanna, ideally, Zach, maybe if you would pass on, back to the applicant via staff, just to indicate that, you know, certainly the board's gonna be interested in knowing that fact, in addition to all the other things. It would be good to have them prep for that.
We'll certainly pass that on.
As far as entertainment, I don't know if they do.
Okay. All right, with that, and seeing no further discussion about that, then this is more of an information for the board. Zach, thank you very much, you did a great job pinching the floor, the team of Valentine Costello, you're welcome back anytime, and I'll let you settle up with David. You're blessed to leave and head home, so.
Have a good night.
You're also welcome to stay and listen, but...
Catch you on TV.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. Okay, so then we'll, thanks, Zach. We'll go back to updating the town website, so, Dave, you are the only thing that's between the board and anything else that they're doing.
Just a hint, right?
Envious spot to be right now, Dave.
So, I will do my best to keep it short, but it's been a while since we've had the opportunity to talk about the website. The last time that we met as a group was really going back and looking at the RFP, when we went through our vendor review. After that timeframe, I've had a few, you know, communications through email with you, keeping you kind of up to date to what's going on. So, I wanted to start with just at least a highlight of the timeline, where we are today, and talk about the site map overall, what we're looking at for Penfield.org. So, the spreadsheet in front of you right now for the timeline, just kind of breaks down kind of the progress that we've made. Right now, we're in the middle of August. The areas in green are what we're actively working on, the items in blue have been completed, the items in yellow are coming up. On the far right, you'll see the red bar, that is when our contract with the current hosting company expires. So, we have a requirement 30 days prior to that to provide notification that we are gonna end that agreement. Penfield.org, as we look down, we are in a prediction of a window, looking at the timeline outwards, that we're in the mid-December to maybe Jan. 1, for an actual live site to launch to the public. Obviously, there'll be a few weeks there, we'll be doing beta testing in advance of that. Library is the one that we have an earlier cutoff date on, and we are looking at that, really at the end of September, we're kind of gonna leak into October here a little bit. Talking with Bunny, doesn't see that to be a problem at this point, that we have a little lenience in there, but that project's gonna come through pretty quick once we get through the design phase. Recreation and TV have yet to get started in their design mode, but again, those will move quickly, there are smaller sites, they're smaller than what the library is or the town site. All these sub-sites are relying on the backend of the core site being Penfield.org, so at this point, the site has been coded, and it's in the process of its content management system for the backend to be built, working with Revise thus far this week. We've taken care of analytics, we're taking care of some of those other interconnects that we have to deal with with the DNS preps. But the key here is that we're getting much closer to having a site in front of us to start doing a data transfer. So, the migration will occur by Revise. So, with that, if you have no questions on the timeline, I'm gonna segue into Penfield.org and where we stand currently. So, before we can do a data migration, we do have to complete the site map. So, this is the roadmap for what this site's gonna look like. We've been mind-mapping this, that map right now would be quite large to lay out. I tried to break this down as easily as possible for you and segment this out, so you can kind of get a sense of where things are. In the beginning, when we talked about the site, one of the big things was that the site's not gonna be set up as how we're organized as the organization as a whole, so those responsibilities within the various departments make good sense on an internal basis for us to navigate that way, but on an external basis, our customer base does not navigate the township in the same way that we do. So, from that standpoint, the approach to this layout is gonna be completely based on the user's experience, so from the resident. The site itself, let me give you this packet, because then we can kind of follow along to what is the menus. So, you've seen these before with the aspect of email. So, the mega-menu that we are referring to, Home, Your Government, and breakdown, is the white menu across the top. Again, these are just content, they're subject to change still. Nothing here is set in stone for us, but this is our first draft view of how we see this to look. So, as you read through this and you look at Your Government, you can see that up on the top, and then what's gonna be underneath of it. So, we're breaking that down by elected officials, and as we indicated, that that would be all elected officials that are serving within the jurisdiction of the town of Penfield, but that would be the overlying of other government entities, being the county, the state, and the federal. Then we break it down by the school boards as well, fire departments. Boards, in talking with staff, we're breaking the boards and the committees out, we've kind of kept them all as a group, but the decision here is that those groups that are, those boards that are making decision-making are within the boards, and any group or board that is not making a decision is in the committees, so those who are separated. Sustainability is a new area that we're adding, and then we're gonna get into departments. I don't need to go through them all, but you take a look at that on your own, as far as the detail, it's a couple pages worth here. And at the bottom of that section, we will get into the fee schedule and the staff directory, so this is all under, again, Your Government. I give you a sample of what the staff directory can look like, and we've kind of liked the look of this one. So, from that standpoint, this would be a list of everyone within the organization, somebody can come in, look them up, find out what office they're in, how to contact them. New section, Our Community, this is a goal to break it out, and really to kind of dive into those services that we have available within our community that not necessarily are operated specifically by the town of Penfield. This is more of our community links. Business, business is a new area for us, before we had economic development, and kind of prepping for Mr. Costello's future is to look at the fact of how that will get folded over some of his responsibilities within planning, but looking at that as bringing business right up to the top in the menu system, and this will allow for resources to expand beyond just economic development, but all resources for those who wish to do business within the town of Penfield.
So, like Amy gets those, the door-to-door people?
Yep.
So, if she says these door-to-door people have, you know, permission, would it, you put it up on the website, so if somebody wondered, these people that are coming to my door, they can go on the website to check it out versus making a phone call?
Currently there today. Door-to-door solicitors are there, it's been there for about six years, six or seven years, we have that one there. But currently, it's located under Clerk, so it's not easy to find. And what you're gonna find here is door-to-door solicitors, so if you're a business, looking to do door-to-door solicitation, there's gonna be information here about what you need to do, but then under the resident area, you will also see a duplication of that for door-to-door solicitors. What do I do about door-to-door solicitors? So, it has two-pronged approach to the same subject matter, depends on who you are.
Right. So, it'd still be under the Clerk's, but it'd also be under business?
It'll be a link over in the Clerk's, but the idea is that we're taking things out of the departments, because I don't know, I need to go to the Clerk's office for that.
You're tailoring it to the consumer.
Correct.
Very good.
So, then under the residents, just as you were saying, you're gonna find door-to-door solicitors in there as well, but you're gonna see a wealth of information under residents, so from door-to-door solicitors, information about contractors, curb pickup.
What exactly are you gonna have under curb pickups?
Right now, DPW has requested all the waste haulers to be listed, because they get frequent phone calls on that, and due to that, there's a discussion we have to have a little bit further, is are we potentially promoting or endorsing a business at this time?
Does that business?
So, the teams are kind of in the mindset of, we may pull back on what we currently list and go back to making the reference of, you know, we do not provide. You gotta remember, many residents moving into the community come from other areas where municipalities or government entities have provided these services, so we do have to also look at the information we're providing, not just to what we do, but what we don't do. Because if we don't list something we don't do, the same problems start coming, the phone calls keep coming, the inquiries, we need to educate. But the idea of pulling back on the waste haulers to say, "We do not provide this service, it is done commercially, and how can you seek them out?"
So, why isn't it like waste haulers under businesses, landlords and everything else? Because that's...
Yeah, I would name it differently. I would call it refuse.
I put them over there.
So, again, but that's a business that's looking to do business in town, and we can add waste haulers if they want to do business, what do they have to do? But I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if there's a permitting process to do business in town for waste haulers.
Oh, so because you're not getting a permit or anything? You don't have any, you don't touch the town hall in any way?
Correct.
Right.
So, there would be no need, but from a resident standpoint, that's a service they're looking for.
Yeah. I'd be concerned about, you know, the slippery slope of that, too, where, you know, you can start to think of other areas where, well, you know, fitness, or...
Cable TV.
Yeah, and different...
There's a million different things, I mean, it's up to the person moving in to figure out where they're gonna get their...
Right.
That would be my recommendation.
So, cable TV is...
Plowing, everything, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, I would...
But waste haulers, we're still gonna have information there about curbside pickup, whatever that may be, and also the fact, we indicate leaves, and it's not necessarily to be that, but, you know, what services do, are available at the town, that if you're looking for that kind of service, who do you go to? If the town doesn't provide that services, it's a commercial service that you have to seek out. So, we have to still put that kind of a disclaimer out.
There might be some link, if you can find something on the web, that's a link to...
We're gonna be very careful about doing links.
It's hard, those change, and...
Yeah. We're trying to keep this to keep it a little more maintenance-free, a little evergreen, so the aspect of putting a lot of links out, those links change, and then next year, we have broken links on our site, so that just gives us more responsibility for cleaning that up. So, as we're going through this process with content, we're really triaging everything to say, what can we get rid of, what has been broken links, what's been causing issue? So, emergency preparedness, home safety, the major events that we have within the community between amphitheater, Halloween, the Halloween, you know, they talk about trick-or-treating, you know, this is just another educational thing. Many people inquire with us as far as, what day is Halloween, what day is the trick-or-treating? So, we are taking the mindset also, where we've got all these inquiries in the past, to say, the town doesn't regulate it, we gotta put a statement out. So, that gives you kind of a sense, and then we get into municipal services, what are available at the town. And a lot of that is coming out of course Clerk, our facilities, our licensing. Lost and found, we've done for pets in the past, we're gonna expand on that a little bit, with lost and found through the parks, if somebody finds something or loses something, that they could contact us. Parks and nature preserve, a little bit of a different approach, you know, in the past, you've kind of looked at recreation as parks and rec. Recreation has requested that parks be removed from their department site, so that really falls under the Parks Department, not recreation, so it is coming back over to Penfield.org. We're expanding on that to include all county parks and nature preserves, so that way, regardless of, I'm a resident, I'm looking for a park, just because it's not a town park, it's still...
So, do the lodges, then? Are lodges, lodge reservations being moved from recreation?
It's still gonna go through rec track, but the link is gonna come through parks.
Yeah.
Yep. So, but as we look at parks, you're gonna be looking, you're gonna see the county information. So, we got the county parks, we got the nature preserves in there, we're gonna list everything, because it's a resource. We're going to list everything because it's a resource to our residents. The difference is when we put the information online about it, we just need to clearly earmark that this is a county park, and for any services or information about that park beyond what's available, they need to go to the county. And we will have a link to the county's parks page at that point.
So are they going to, are they going to start to refer to it as a WebTrack versus a RecTrack?
My words, not their words. It's RecTrack. It's the product.
Got it.
Property improvement for residents. So this is kind of the items that out of the building department, kind of all those do's and don'ts, and how to maintain your property, when do I need a permit, when do I not? You've got to know that you had to go to the building department, you then had to drill down through. So again, this is coming forward under residents, property improvements, and having all that information right up front for them. That will then link back to the building department.
What about sheds?
Trust me, this is not a complete list by no means.
Accessory building.
Yep.
Just like, what about maps? Like interactive maps?
Maps.
So when you go to like the parks, or when you go to the facilities?
We're going to get to that one. Page 16, How Do I? This is an area that is within the menu, under the mega menus. We're going to build that as we go. It cannot be something we're answering today because the content of the site is being reviewed. Phyllis is reviewing it with every department right now, going through to make sure it's true, accurate, and correct. And in that process, then we're going to meet with the departments after we prep it, and then do a Q and A with them to say, what's those frequent calls? What does somebody need to know? What are we learning out of that process? And that's going to help us to drive the How Do I section? Because all How Do I is a, yet a third navigation point to get to areas within the site. Quick links. Here's your maps. So we've got communications, maps. As far as the maps, we're going to have a town map that's going to be a Google-based that's going to allow you to turn on layers and stuff. So that way, you can go through and find where the parks are, which parks.
Nice.
Online documents. This is a big area to chunk through. Obviously, you know, we have a lot of documents online. As part of the migration, what we're going to look at is anything in the financial side is going to be a five-year look back. And as far as the agendas, that's only going to be for current year, what is active minutes. For whatever minutes we have online, we are going to move all those minutes forward because they're currently there, it's easy enough to move them forward. All other documents that are on there are going to be questioned as far as its prudence. If it has value, then we'll take it forward if it's part of a conversation or if it's supporting a current project or an application. But due to the number of documents we have, we also realize we're dating back, back into the Weidmer administration. So there's a lot of subject matters there from updates and that that are just not timely anymore or no longer of value. They will be archived, anything that doesn't go forward.
And of course, at the bottom of page 16, they can be filed.
There you go.
Oh boy, oh boy.
17, continuing on, you've got the applications, forms of permits, plans and studies, press releases, RFP notices. RFPs and bid notices. We're going to use a module that is being provided by Revice where individuals can actually come in and track the bids. So that's kind of a neat feature. They can get, sign up for an email when a bid comes out, and then they'll be notified. The page 18, that one there is the footer and the staff only. There's more information going on in the footer, but it's not a timeliness to bring forward at this time because it's going to be kind of changed. But I wanted to give you an insight to what we're looking at on the staff-only area. So HR resources, this gives the employees access to documents, forms, and resources. The committees, the various committees we have within the town in a day-to-day operation, the staff-wise, they can put their team members up, they can get the information for the other staff members to be able to find things and pamphlets, whatever they may have going on. One of the big ones here I think will be helpful is dealing with facilities and looking at that for the aspect that if you have a situation going on with your department, you'd be able to just use that to kind of put through the ticket through to the facilities department. And then boards. The goal with the boards, and this will not be in place when we do launch the site, this will be built through the early half of 2020. The boards, though, will be an area where agendas, documents, applications can be put up online so the board member can then log in, find it. So I know we've used Dropbox, we've been using Google Drive for things, but this will kind of give an area where things go. The nice part about it is it's going to be user-protected, so the planning board members will only see planning, zoning will only see zoning. But if, in many cases, town boards, zoning, and planning share a particular application amongst yourselves, so it's going back and forth. Instead of somebody else uploading all that, that information can quickly be just tagged in for the next board to see it. So that way, they can follow along. So from the site, the site itself, Penfield.org, like I said, we've already kind of looked at that and went through, but the one that's being wrapped up right now in the design phase is the library. So the library, I think, is actually looking really good. I'm really impressed for the librarians and their thought process going through this. They've been quite organized and had some clear vision of what they wanted. I think we've met that and possibly exceeded it through this process. So the color palette is nice, doesn't really represent perfectly in the color printer here, but gives you a close representation. So you've got to look at their interior page as well as their landing page.
Are they, I just had a curiosity, are they rebranding like...
Yes. They have a new logo. It's right down.
I see that. I haven't seen it at the library yet, but I was just curious, like, far and wide, how are they, how far are they actually rebranding themselves?
They still have a logo. They hired somebody and then...
Got it.
So the one, the one item that I know that has come up in his race, some question, is with regards to, the Penfield Library would prefer not to have the town of Penfield noted on the bottom.
Why?
Well, I don't have a good answer for that, but I wanted to just bring it to the table for discussion because, you know, from my perspective, the library is a department of the town, no different than Public Works, no different than, you know, Billion Department, etc.
I would very much like to hear an answer from them.
So I, my recommendation would be that we continue on and that that be included as part of that because they are, in fact, are funded by the town.
And the website is the property of the town. That's probably what they're...
That's fine, but they're funded by the town. We have, we have, you know, assets committed. They, you know, are, you know, within our buildings. They don't own a building. They don't, they don't develop their own budget or raise their own monies through the taxpayers. Everything is done via the town. So, I mean, my recommendation would be that this is on and part of.
I'm not even entertaining moving it from a...
I would agree, and if they, you know, want to discuss it further, they can come to a work session.
Absolutely.
I just, the reason why it ended up there, you know, I knew they were sensitive to it, but I was reminded by Revice, given the fact that our licensing for the software and the responsibility for the content we're posting, and if something comes up as question, who do you contact in regards to concern? That has to come back to the town as an owner, not to the library as a department. And that was the reason why a decision was made to add that. It was done subtly to put it in place. I know with, as we go forward with the other subsites that we're doing for Recreation and Cable, there's a stronger brand there that would be present, that those are departments of the town of Penfield, so it'll be clear. But understanding what their sensitivity was, this was a compromise to make it subtle, but still be identifiable.
Yes. That's the issue.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing that up.
No, no problem. Absolutely.
Any questions?
I was going to say, this is a point, questions, I mean, I think Dave said on a couple of occasions, I mean, we're still working on, we're still working through, populating information. What you see here on this front page of this here, you know, there is still opportunities to...
I have a question.
But now's the time to, now's the time to chat.
Yeah, so on the, on the library page, it does have right underneath the main banner, the sign up for newsletter updates. This actually came up at the comprehensive plan meeting last night about sort of an opt-in to the...
Recreation?
No, a town database of some sort, to receive notifications of some relevance. So the question is, is there interest or, because again, it came up with the comprehensive committee last night, is there interest somewhere to have sign up for? And I don't even know what content would go out the door on the other end, but basically to cap, start to capture a town-wide database, an opt-in town-wide database where if we wanted to email something about the Fourth of July parade or started to have more of an outreach...
Similar to Rec.
Similar to Rec, but this would be 100% opt-in, no different than Rec because you have to submit your information. But one of the focuses or the conversation points last night was just all of the resources, certainly, we provide myriad of resources to our residents to locate and find information. But there are always people who think that we need to do more. So at the bottom, at the top, on the side, maybe a thought of signing into a, you know, you can enter your email address, and now you can get, not necessarily a town-wide newsletter, but you can get...
A supervisor's column every week.
The column every week, or you can get information on the Fourth of July.
I can give you some information. So as we go through this process, yes, you will be able to do that. In fact, what we are trying to design that to do is that if you want to follow a board, that you can then sign up to get, when those agendas get posted, that you would get notified when that agenda got posted. So you can do it by subject. If we had another event come up with some type of open space or a major event going on in the community, we can make that a special area where people could then come in and sign up to say, hey, I want to get information about, I'll use Shadow Pines as an example, you know, some hot topic in the community, I can then follow that.
So I envision a, you, you sign up with your email and then like you do on a subscription?
Checkboxes.
Check, checkbox what you want?
Yep.
Or all of the above?
Rec brochures.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then I could check that, and I'll get an email saying the rec brochure is available at this link.
The new one is available?
Available.
Because that normally comes out like 10 days, two weeks before the parade copy, but that you would get a, get a little...
Because I just, email notifications are great because for no other reason than I can go back through an email and search a word and find, oh, there it is, okay. Just something, again, feedback from last night. You know, it's, it's, one of the hardest things as government is to secure information from residents because they're wary of providing information to government, and I totally respect that, understand it. So, but there are those who want to opt in, and again, if there are opportunities, like you said, to kind of capture it where it's very clearly stated on the library website that if there's a way to, hey, for newsletters or for information from the town of Penfield, whatever they want to do, then they can do a checkbox or whatever.
So the advantage by doing this project is that we're taking four sites, and now five with the libraries, 501(c)(3), that we're going to do that post all of these sites. It's sharing the same content management system.
Good.
So what ends up transpiring is that even though you go to the library site and you sign up there for something, that information is still available to us. So if we have an emergency or something where we, you got flooding, we got a natural disaster, we need to get information out, we will have the ability to hit all of it. So we can pull it all back in and then, you know, go back out with that. So I think that's the goal that we were looking at as far as, how can we communicate and do it in single key entry? What we did not want to have through this process is that a resident has to go to Recreation, sign up for something, then we have to promote them to go sign up over here for something, and then promote it again to sign up. It's kind of all under the hood. They don't realize that the information's coming into one gigantic database, but it's being filtered based on subject.
Based on interest in subject.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's being proactively monitored there.
Correct. And the other advantage, I mean, we got away from doing newsletters from the current site because of the fact that it just became more and more cumbersome due to the email systems here giving us flags. But also, one of the problems we ran into with it is the number of kickbacks due to mailboxes being full. And it would just jam up the web server. When it jammed up the web server, it would slow that server down, which basically caused all the sites that we were hosting to then start crashing out because the server's trying to kick these things out and just can't. The new, the new side of this will make it much easier, much more fluid for us. But we refer to it as the communication wheel, and how many spokes do we have in it, and how many more spokes can we put in it? To that point, Rob, just to expand on that, is that with the publishing of news-type events and updates to the front page, this is going to have a more streamlined effect to social media. So from that standpoint, we will be able to get those back out as an auto-generation versus us doing it manually, which we have to be doing.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. And it's going to be mobile-based.
This is going to, yeah, so what I didn't indicate in here, because I do not have a clear discussion with Revice as far as when that becomes available, but it is mobile-friendly. It's going to be device-friendly regardless. But in addition to it is the app. The app most likely is not going to happen until probably mid-2020 where we get that one finalized.
The Penfield app?
Town of Penfield app.
Yes.
So the way that's going to work with the subsites is that the subsites will be able to be reached through that. So we're going to be promoting just the Town of Penfield app. So if you want to find the library, there'll be a button for the library, which will then take you into their site. There will not be a separate app for each one of those subsites. It's just going to be the one.
That makes sense. Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for this.
My account, very, very clearly stated on the library page.
Overdue work.
Just out of curiosity, what is the, the settings? I'm assuming that's a settings button on the top of the page, Dave?
Ah, the gear.
The gear. What is that, and why would a resident kind of have access to that, or what does that mean for?
Well, actually, it's kind of neat for what's going to be under the hood in that because that's really where, on one side, all your ADA tools are located, which will allow you to change the color of the site, it's going to allow you to turn it to monochrome, it's black and white, whatever color you need to, you can change it for readability.
Oh, okay.
Opportunity for speech to text, or text to speech, rather, for reading ability. Print friendly. So one of the big problems you have when you want to go and click print to print a page is the fact that the page prints differently by everybody's browser. What we're doing is having it set up so that way, if you want to print the page, if you go to that gear, you'll be able to hit print. You're going to get a print-friendly version of it, which will dump the graphics, it's going to pull that stuff out, and give you more of a true eight and a half by 11 legible document to read. There's a lot of things we can expand on, but right now, we are geared up for a launch with about 13 items under there to start, and then we'll probably expand on that and see how we're doing in the beginning and what the feedback is. But that really is kind of that universal icon that you see with most devices now. You've got a little gear for your settings. Think of it as kind of a customization to the site. You can kind of manipulate the site to change it to what you want it to be.
Yeah, I, I like that. I'm continued to be impressed by this whole process. I think from the very beginning, when you brought it to us, the due diligence that you and Brian and the team put together as far as selecting the vendor and now where you are and all of the nuance to the site, I'm impressed by the work that you put into this.
Thank you.
So I just want to say that again. Looking forward to the next couple of months and seeing it go live and how it can be, you know, just how it's going to work and how the residents are going to react to it, so...
I mean, this truly could be an initiative that benefits the most residents.
Oh, without question. Oh, absolutely. Without question. Everyone is on their phone, and the fact that the website is going to be modified to be more user-friendly, but then mobile-based, it's just, absolutely. more user-friendly, but then mobile-based, it's just, absolutely, so.
Great job.
Thank you. Pass it on to the team because it has been a team effort by all means. We meet every, every Tuesday morning and sit downstairs and go through this and a lot of things get thrown at the wall and sometimes very little sticks. And that's the good part about it is we're really kind of shaking down everything and seeing the holes that we have in this information, but also in the communication side of things, we're seeing holes that we can improve upon, but also we're asking questions of what the departments have provided or how the department does something. It's unclear to us, you know, it's a little bit Greek, even though we're part of the town and here, we're trying to get more information and that's adding to clarify information to make it more educational online for people. And that's really the goal is if we can educate and make that information available to them, I think we can improve the customer support and that customer experience both in-house as well as remotely.
Is there a, is there a public hearing or a public information meeting related to this at any point? I think, and I say that because I think it would be extremely helpful to have sort of an unveiling or information meeting, like just the, just the two or three minutes that you shared with me about what the blue gear means is fascinating to me and I never had any idea that the site could do that. And I just, stuff like that should be.
It's on our radar.
To do something. It should be shared. It should be shared with the community. It, you know, if it's just in here, that's fine, but if there should be a different way that we can think of doing it, maybe if Phyllis start to brainstorm ideas, but this is a major undertaking and it's going to be a huge change for residents and the interaction that they have with their government and community, so it's just.
So a couple of areas that we've discussed and we have kind of on our radar for a launch is, it's going to be obviously a beta test mode and then we're going to get into a soft launch where we're going to be looking at it, we're really kind of hoping that things will be in play, that we can test this out going through that December, January, because there's going to be a lot of the ability to test the auto functions to make some switches for us. So we're looking forward to trying that out. But we've considered the fact of YouTube for one is to kind of go through and do some of those instructional videos for people and just.
Tech shirts.
Yeah.
My kids love to use them all the time.
But just kind of doing the, like a little 60-second highlight of here's what you need to know, if you're looking for this, you know, here's how to do that.
Oh, promoting it too.
Promoting it.
What's the word, Penfield?
But there's other opportunities when we have just even the town board meetings to kind of go through and just water drip through that aspect of kind of sharing a little three, four-minute presentation on a service or a different module. Because when we get to the app, it's going to be again, an educational piece to go through it. I think for the most part, what Revised has done with this, I'm confident that we're not putting anything out there that somebody really hasn't seen before. That's so trend-setting that it's kind of a new era. I think we've stuck to the values of good, solid practices through this. My, my concern will be is that shock and awe, that first time that you come in and go, where is that? Or the fact of, you know, I bookmarked what I always want to go to and not it bookmarked on some work. So we're recognizing that, that we're going to have some growing pains like everything. You know, if you move the, the entry to the building, a number of people are still going to walk up to the old entrance.
I was going to say, and people get used to, you know, I always went to this particular item and now that's a difference. So any, any change does have a little bit of gas associated with it.
And an educational component for staff as well because they're going to be taking questions.
Correct.
I'm, I'm looking at the website and I don't know where this is anymore.
And we're talking about, in the timeline I've indicated past the launch is staff training because we're going to really get into that aspect of we need to train them on how to use some of the tools going forward. You know, we got some questions that we're going to have for you guys to make some decisions on later as we go down the road here closer to November, December, as far as which way you want us to use a tool, how do you want us to implement that? And I'll give you more information as we get closer to consider, but that's going to kind of drive some of this process. But once those pieces start falling in, I think we'll have a solid path where we can then sit down and work with our staff internally to have a little one-hour event in here, show them, do a walkthrough. Hopefully, everybody at that point would have had the ability to start testing the beta site, to put their questions together, see it, feel it before we actually go live.
Yeah, having that beta, having that beta site being up and letting folks kind of get in there and.
We're doing something similar to that at work right now, this new stuff. And I mean, we've been at the beta stuff for like two weeks, three weeks, and it's opening up a lot of other questions and real-time modifications. And so it's, it's very important.
It's a moving target, but we understand that our drop date is we have to be off by April next year.
Right.
You know, that's a given, we do not want to renew that contract due to the financial side of that, makes no sense to do that. If we, if for some reason we got into a pickle, I would say we try to negotiate something on a month-to-month basis for that. I don't vision that happening. By, by the way, the timeline is set up and we've got plenty of time to get through it. I knew I kind of came at this promising September timeframe, but just given the moving targets and the number of things going on, really the contents were slowing us down at this point.
Yeah, let's get it right.
So we don't want to launch with incorrect information. We do not wish to also go forward and find that we got big holes that we're trying to fill in. We're triaging this layout. Obviously, the front side is most important to us, the back end is second important to us as far as the tools for the boards and committees, and those are going to be phased in.
Yep. Okay. All right, are there questions for David?
Thank you.
All right, David, thank you. All right, seeing no further business to come before the board, the August 14, 2019 work session stands adjourned at 8:20 PM. Thank everyone that participated, thanks to those that are downstairs listening to this but making this happen on the airwaves.